All right, I'm the Vice Mayor. I call to order the regular City Council meeting on March 5th at 6:03 PM. And if we could do the flag slip, Councilor Patterson, if you'd like us to know.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Go up.
Yes, please.
Governor George.
Here.
Governor Kaiser.
Here.
Governor Art in excellent, Vice Mayor Ryan, and Mary, we will not be doing this too much as an accent.
Then she was excused unless you close down the sun.
Oh, there's Mr. Art.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Hey, buddy, how you been?
How are you?
Fine now.
Something's great up here.
Sure, I don't have to.
There's one here. You guys can get down here.
She won't be back. She's not going to just get down. Oh, go, go.
All right, we have no scheduled presentations or announcements this evening. We'll move forward with public comment. This is the time for members of the public to come forward and comment. You'll have three minutes. Please come and say your name and residence for public record, but you'll have three minutes to comment on items not on our agenda. All the items on our agenda, you'll have an opportunity to comment specific to those items when they come up. So, Consent Agenda is a check register. There's questions regarding the check register. There's a range of Consent Agenda. Public hearing will have its own, that's this Community Development Block Grant application public hearing. Then for our new business, we have a resolution regarding that Community Development Block Grant Program application, and we have review of committee appointments, committees in general on Dunsmere, discussion of possible action, Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce, and item D, revisit the 2019-20 budget goals and objectives. So please come forward if you have anything to comment on, not on the agenda.
Hi, Paris Patrick, Shasta Avenue. I just learned that it's 16 days till Julie retires, and I just wanted to say on behalf of Dunsmere that we love you, and you were going to be missed, but that you supposedly have a wonderful replacement, so we look forward to meeting you. Thank you.
I agree.
We'd like to introduce Wendy.
Please, Wendy.
This is Wendy Burris. She is obviously a resident of Dunsmere and has actually been serving on our planning commission for a period of time, and she came out on top of the approximately, what, eight applications that we need to execute. So she's been working with me, a job shadowing the last couple of days, and will start working with me full-time on many.
Yay!
Welcome. It's Wendy, we gotta say it around here, welcome to the party.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I know I have big, huge bills.
Huge.
Scandal.
Just a procedural question, do you have to... Yeah. Do you have to give up your seat on the plan?
I officially resign this day.
All right, well, it's due to me. I'm taking further public comments. Those are broken, but this is the time for public comments on items not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, let's move forward with council and staff comments. City Mayor, would you like to?
Um, I'd like to make some comments.
Yeah, just any comments?
Nothing really too exciting.
You gotta do all these things. What's that? You gotta do all these things?
Please.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, we've got folks down surveying 11.70 curb parks that we talk about at the south end of Dunsmere, and we actually, so looking for a replacement for children's park, we were down in the Bottom Valley, doesn't make sense down there, just the liability issues. There's actually a parcel right across from the Dunsmere brewworks that is an abandoned street that is almost the same size as the current park, and so we're having that surveyed, and then, you know, the issue there will be just pulling up that sidewalk, getting acid curbs down, whatever we need, getting new playground equipment, and then we'll talk about a rent issue.
Sweet.
Is there any other things of note in the last two weeks?
In terms of anything in general?
Anything you'd like to share with the council?
Yeah, I mean, it gets rid of some really boring stuff. You guys have copied all on this, but there is a Caltrans project to redact the I-5 Bridge, the 800-foot bridge, and our water line runs underneath it. They were trying to get us to pay to move that water line to the tune of a little over $3 million, and, you know, we don't know exactly how it's going to shake out, but the amount of flat funding I've done, I think that we're off the hook.
Excellent.
It's what we've done off of historical records.
Final answer here? For the law enforcement representative, Karen?
Yes, Deputy Sheriff's Office Sergeant Westine is unavailable tonight. He asked that I fill in. He said, I don't have any stats to present tonight for the month of February. He said he would present those stats in the next meeting. I'm going to tell you, I've been working night shift for the last couple of months. It's been busy. It seems like all around day shift, night shift, there's been a lot of calls for service and like a jump in that. And we've been proactive. I know there's been a lot of traffic enforcement, citations, and there's been quite a few arrests made in the last couple of months, warrant arrests, drug arrests, things like that. So we're just trying our best to hammer down on that.
All right, well, thank you so much. You're president.
Yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Councilman Art?
My only promotional comments are to continue to support the community coming together for the Alexander Dunsmere Award, the Citizen of the Year Award, the Business of the Year Award. There is a committee. The event is going to be at the community center, I think on May 6. So obviously, we hope this is the community honoring members of the community, that everybody that has the least bit of interest comes. The other event is across the street, we have Dunsmere Community Garden, and we are still looking for volunteers for the growing season coming up. As a member of the advisory group, we're very pleased that the taxpayers and citizens supported our community garden, from feeding the hungry to educating children. We have 30 bids this year. We're about to go out with a fundraiser, our adopt a bid program where a business pays $100 to get a sign in one of our 30 bids. We continue to refine our goals and objectives, but we hope this is our best year ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Art?
Thank you. Two things I'd like to bring up. One of them is, is that yesterday was a really exciting day, I think, for me and the rest of the community, to have a supermarket back again. And if you had a chance to, was hop in yesterday, and I did, and I talked to Keith, the owner, McCool, and smiles and out-loud smiles were all around, people walking in with a grin on their face, everybody thanking him. I know that there was talk about how situation got to where it was, and if you read the article in the paper that Tru wrote, it covers that aspect of it, and my understanding is, is that they had been working with a company that ended up getting rid of the person servicing the store without notifying anybody for four or five months, and so that was a large part of what took place. On the other side of it, it's a new day. We have a beautiful supermarket. If you haven't had a chance to walk in, I think you must be amazed at how well it's stocked and how he has put a lot of money in. He's bet on Dunsmere. He told me that he used to work at the store back in 1971. So I encourage everyone to go and celebrate the fact that we have that back in our community, especially for the people who have trouble getting around. It's a big day, and I want to encourage everyone to realize that we have, in this small community, a very huge asset, and we have a store owner that was willing to put out a lot of money in order to bring it back up and offer it back to you, and hope you all appreciate that. The other thing I want to point out is, is that, I've mentioned it before, and I want to keep mentioning it, we're working up towards it right now, April 18th, which is a Saturday, Building Dunsmere's Future. And this is an event to do a couple of different things. It'll be a Saturday, and it's the last Saturday before the fishing season, so the whole idea was we wanted to have this before the new tourist season comes along. And the two things we're looking at doing are bringing all the people that have moved in here over the years all together at one time, whether you were born here, or you moved here from the Paradise Spire, whatever, bring us together and look back at what Dunsmere used to be, what are the values we want to pull forward, what do we want to work on now, and this is something we'll be working with with the schools. It'll be at the high school as it's planned right now, there'll be a luncheon that will be paid for by the Ford Family Institute, but the big thing that I'm also looking at besides that is I really want to use this as an opportunity to reset the community in terms of volunteerism. And I know that, having been working both with the Rotary and a few other different groups, there are a limited number of people who tend to put on a whole lot of different events, and I don't think that's because people out in the community don't want to be involved or don't want to volunteer. I think it's a matter of letting them know what's available and starting off with an ethos that being a citizen of Dunsmere means that you give back five to 10 years, five to 10 hours a year, or something like that. So I'll be working to, and working with the chamber right now to identify all the various organizations in the city that have volunteer hours. Want to gather a database together that lets people know that if you want to volunteer, say for the railroad days, and all you want to do is come that day and help carry things around, you can be part of the carry-around group, but if you're involved in planning whatever, so that's kind of what I'm looking forward to. And the big thing is, when Efta did this, they had a really big event, and I went myself just to watch it so I could prepare for this one, and in a city of 700 people on a Saturday, they had 100 people show up. So it was beautiful to watch. I'm looking forward to bringing that same experience here, April 18th. We're looking at a starting time now of 9:30 and 9:30 to 3:30, and so it'll be community building and volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Patterson?
Okay. A lot of rough few feathers right now, because I have a couple of questions about the agenda. You're running the meeting, Mr. Mayor. Do you want me to talk about the agenda now so we can go on and improve the agenda? Or you want me to just make my own?
Choice is yours. Well, I think this, if you're feathers, I'm going to rough up service, not feathers. Well, I do believe we need to address which things should potentially be done, both the actions of our mayor.
That's right.
And I'm fully intending on getting to that. If you want to share any comments, general comments, not related to committees or the agenda right now, you can.
Okay.
Talk about the agenda later.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to be soon hitting you up for a Rotary golf tournament for T-signs, and the T-signs are $50, and what it is, is you get a sign with your business, it goes out all around the Shastina Lake Golf Course, and all the money goes to support our backpack program for our kids. And if y'all don't realize it, when these kids go home on weeknight with a backpack, with a bunch of food, that's all they got. It's a shame, but it's a fact. That's all they got, and I'm honored to be part of this program, and I give it a thousand percent commitment, so I believe it's April 25th at the Lake Shastina Golf Course, and if you'd like to play golf, please get ahold of me or any Rotarian, we would love to have you, your organization, your team, we would love to have that.
Do you have a contact for people that are interested?
Run 925-9365.
Thank you.
On the other note, I'd like to say that I attended the, I don't know if you guys know this, the dinner with the principal. It was, it was a remarkable, a remarkable event. Susan Keeler is our principal, and she laid out everything that the school is about. There were staff there. It was co-sponsored by the Resource Center. It was, it was a really amazing event. Pizza Factory supplying all the pizzas. That's one thing, but on the same note, Susan Keeler doesn't live in Dunsmere, but Susan Keeler's been working for this school for 36 years. I don't know if you guys know what she does up there, but it is amazing. So we have this thing called the Citizen of the Year coming up. I'm just telling you, this is my vote, Susan Keeler, and I think she deserves it, so with that in mind, think about that, 36 years for these kids, and she's, she has three generations. That's pretty cool. She has people that are helping her now that were kids, so anyway, thank you for that, but please, if you guys, if you can't come think golf with us for our tournament, at least support it, because it's a big thing for our kids in this town, and I thank you for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Art. I'd just like to say that our mayor, Casey, is sad to not be with us tonight. We do miss her. She wanted to send her regards to everyone at this meeting and thank us for moving forward with pressing business, and she'll probably look forward to joining us in the future I would like to say, in honor of the mayor, the tremendous work she did in leading you guys to the survey, those are, I believe, fitting the streets here shortly. If you haven't received them in your bill, you should be receiving them, but we have a community visioning process or goals where we put some just questions to the citizens of Dunsmere as to what's important to them, and the council very much looks forward to hearing from the citizens of Dunsmere, but we hope that it reaches everyone, and everyone takes the opportunity to voice their opinion and concern. We're very excited about it. If you do not receive the survey, or you want to get one in mail, and you live with someone who disagrees with some of your answers, we do have a great many of them in City Hall, and I believe they'll be posted in other locations throughout the city, hopefully the library, we've all stocked, and maybe some businesses. But please spread the word to any and everyone you know who loves Dunsmere, is in the sphere of influence, you know, just here in South Dunsmere, and you're not in city limits does not mean you're not a vital part of our community, please take the time, may only take 10 minutes to think about it and express that, but this council, I believe, is committed to taking your voice seriously, so we need you to speak up at this juncture. I'd like to thank the mayor for her hard work in putting that together. Second, I just want to say that we reached the exciting point of the year where the audit for the prior fiscal year has come in. Just like to remind everyone that, you know, it's our money that gets brought in through taxes in various forms and gets spent for our mutual benefit in the city of Dunsmere. Our staff largely takes care of that exact spending, we don't know the details, and once a year, as a requirement by law, we have a third party come in and look over the books, every page, every penny, and he writes back a report to us. This report was just accepted by the finance director and the finance committee at a meeting a week ago, and it's available if you're interested in what our financial position is from the 2018-19 year. It's very exciting, it gives us more accurate data going forward, but it's a vital part of keeping our government going and keeping it independent, transparent. There were some findings that we'll discuss probably in committee reports, but it's an exciting part of the year. It comes once, we get to look back and see how we've actually moved in terms of all the revenue coming in, all the going out. Also, I know we've had many years ago, multiple history with where money was going here and there, there's a lot of rumors about that. I'd just like to encourage anyone who remembers any doubt to come in and talk to our staff, they're very helpful, and also to take on one of those audits, take a look at it, see kind of all the moving parts. It's a lot to look at, but if you are at all interested, it's a good time of year to get involved that way. I encourage you to come to the next finance committee meeting, March 18th, Wednesday at 5:00 PM. And with that, I'd like to move on to committee reports. We're meeting committees, other than the finance committee?
Well, I guess one of the things I think I realized coming into this meeting is, is that when we talk about economic development, we haven't really had an Economic Development Committee meeting, and the reason, one of the reasons from my standpoint that we haven't is because I got to the point where, when we started off, and I started off five years ago on this council and was given the chair of that committee, we were left with a list from one of the meetings where 20 or 30 people showed up and all kinds of ideas of what we could do as an Economic Development Committee, and it really came down to the fact that anything that we were going to do was going to come up against one reality, and that's the one city manager. And anything that we as a committee were going to try and do outside of working within the council and the priorities we have, we don't have any funding or any time that we can put forward towards that.
I appreciate those thoughts, but if you're discussing the role of the committee, just we have any information relative to that?
No, what I want to say is, is that what has been going on instead is, is that the economic development has been going on with different organizations like the Callier's Information and Interpretation Center. So I'm on the chair, I'm on the board of directors there, and I just wanted to let you know that, that funding request would be coming up from them shortly, and they represent the ability to grab people as they come off the interstate and send them to Dunsmere. The other thing is, is just the revitalization effort, so that is another huge part of that. So I just wanted to point out that in terms of, are there meetings going on? There has been one of the Economic Development Committee, but the committees that I've been going to are part of economic development as well.
And I just, for everyone's benefit there, they may not be officially structured to be underneath the Economic Development Committee, but they are committees that you're a part of that are associated with.
Developing our economy.
And I'd like to expand this committee report to potentially include Parks and Rec, because I remember the Parks and Rec Board here. We have a relationship with them. If they met, I'd love to hear a report on how things are going there, because it's a very close partnership.
So anyway, that was all I wanted to say for my committee reports, is I've been going to those, and we're both, both those cases were very involved in trying to get people to come here to the city.
Thank you for being involved in the committee's reporting. Councilman Patterson?
I got a phone call from the sheriff, says, hey, you know, there's a meeting going on. I said, no, I'm in it. What's the meeting about? He said, right, looks like the mosque, great people. So we won't go into the fact of how mature I was, but I came down here, and it's right here. I walk in there like, not timing right here. All the stakeholders are in there, were expecting you there. I don't know why I was left out of the loop, but I've been promised it won't happen again. I started this stuff, and they all agreed.
To be clear, was it a, was it a committee meeting?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I'm just re-reading the fact that I was invited to it. When I came, I crashed it, and here I'll report on what happened.
All right. Report on the crash.
So, what it comes down to is, they don't seem to want to play ball.
They?
So, you know, it's it. So what we're going to do is, we got this dude Francisco, he's a public relation, this is my input, he's a public relation, and I hope this is on TV, I hope you're watching, he's a public relation dude, you're supposed to keep us at bay. You sure should be thrown in the bay. You have no regard for public safety. You have no regard for the people of this town and the people of other towns that walk the railroads, and for that, we're going to start writing letters to the newspapers. We're going to let them know of your lack of respect for public safety, your neglect for public safety, and we have some people, I won't name, but they're very famous writers that are taking this on. They're bulldogs, and they're going to make these letters in all the main newspapers. The committee has agreed, we're all submitting letters, we're all going to get approval so we all know we're saying pretty much the same thing, and these letters will be put in newspapers all around the country, and my letter will be going to, everything is run out of Omaha, everything. They don't care about Omaha down here in Dunsmere. Omaha don't care about Pine Top, Arizona, they don't care about Phoenix, Arizona, they don't care about Tucson, they don't care about nothing up there, Omaha. My letter's going to Omaha newspaper. Let's see what people in their own town feel about neglect of public safety. So that's where we're going forward, we're attacking them on the fact of their neglect. And that was the, the whole committee concurred on that, we're all going forward on that. It's pretty much an embarrassment campaign. We don't know what else to do. If you don't care about public safety, then we're taking the next step. So that's, we're letting the people know about it, and so that's what came out of the committee. And we're waiting to find out. Everybody's writing the letters and getting their letters together so they're all pretty much, you know, they're all on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patterson. The finance committee met both yesterday and the Wednesday before. The Wednesday before, we had the wonderful opportunity to speak with our auditor and receive the audit, and continue discussion, community promotions process. I'd like to let everyone know who's involved with the organization that's looking to apply for that grant. The application will be accepted until April 1st, and it's available either in City Hall or on our website, printed or downloaded. Please fill out the application submitted in City Hall prior to then, it's going to be a strict cutoff. The timeframe then, so everyone knows, will be, it'll go to the finance committee for further questioning sometime mid-April, and it's going to go for City Council hopefully in early May. I'd like to remind everyone that City Council already passed a $55,000 price cap or budget cap on the amount to be allocated this year in the community promotions fundings. That being said, you know, even if we don't have a lot to spend, we're very much committed to have every dollar go to the programs that are most important to Dunsmere, and part of that is going to be participating in the survey that's currently coming up. You really have an opportunity to be a part of where that money goes and how it affects our community. Just to let everyone involved in community promotions fundings know what timeframe we're working off of this year, we're trying to get our budget in order earlier instead of later, so that'll be the new timeframe as discussed last October. When it comes to the audit, I'd like our finance director to say his words about it.
Specifically with the audit, and what was discussed at the, at the committee meeting was, well, I was hoping Matthew would take on some of those things, but there were two findings that the auditor found. One of them was having to do with, well, I forget what the first one was, but the second one was subsidiary ledgers not reconciling to the general ledger. So in both of these findings, we do understand that they are findings and will be working toward rectifying those.
So the way the auditor's is, actually have all the numbers and conclusions based on the numbers. I was hoping finance director might just state what our financial position is relative to that, whether there are any changes or things to be concerned about. It was discussed at the committee and accepted, but the deficiencies were two findings. One is some of our, our intake software isn't matching perfect with our main accounting software. Rest assured, our main accounting software, our general ledger absolutely reconciles with our bank account, but the auditor's pointed out that we need to get to the bottom of why that subsidiary intake essentially account isn't reconciled with our main accounting software. It's kind of dry, but it's serious. It's not anything to be concerned about, but the recommendation from our auditor was for us to invest in further training with our finance department, and it's based on the finance committee's recommendation, unofficial albeit. We hope City Council, you know, supports the further training to make us come into compliance with best accounting practices. It's not as if we're, any concern came up, a huge discrepancy that couldn't be figured out, it was, you had two points. It was, you had two points where we're not behaving with our accounting procedure the way you would according to best practice. It was the best way to do things, and he wants us to stick with that. And we plan on spending the time and effort. And we're glad our Finance Director is willing to accept the challenge of further training.
Definitely. And City Manager reminded me that the first finding had to deal with depreciation and the line items associated with depreciation, so on that exciting note.
Then when it comes to the overall findings of the audit, and there's a lot going on there, we learned more from the year budget review. I believe I briefed, I wasn't at the last meeting, unfortunately I was ill. But prior to that, we discussed what our position is. In the year that the enterprise funds are doing fairly well, with the exception of sewer, we're kind of concerned about lower revenue. The general fund is doing as expected with a $90,000 deficit this year. But going back to the audit, one thing that does come up, came up in the audit before this, and it'll come up this audit and probably next audit, is, you know, that the airport does borrow money essentially from the general fund each year to cover the costs. In other words, if there's a bill that needs to be paid, money that's actually spent on the airport goes from the general fund. And the airport fund just says, oh, here's an IOU, general fund. And that amount has blossomed up to be over $80,000 as of June 30th this past year. And, you know, this problem of the airport, or even the opportunity of the airport, goes back longer than most of us. The county gifted the airport to our town in the 60s and has gone through struggles ever since. So, Mr. Mayor.
Why are we talking about the airport right now?
Because it was in the audit.
There are a lot of things in the audit.
Yeah, it's one of the primary concerns, particularly when it comes to the accounting. How do we deal with that debt? We have the option of saying, hey, it's over, or we could hang on to it and have it be something that's repaid. Which is being brought up because it's now the second time I've talked to the auditor in my time as a City Councilor, and we're having the same conversations each year. And we're just trying to commit, you know, both with further training and with trying to tackle some of these decades-long issues. Try to get to the point where our finances are very much in order, and we look forward to all the money we have, what little it is, being spent on the programs, most importantly, our systems. So that's essentially the Finance Committee. Councilor Art is also on the committee, do you have anything further to add?
Well, I, we're on committee reports. My only question as a point of information is, did the airport committee meet or not?
They clearly did not, or Councilor Deutsch, whatever.
Could we stop talking about the airport committee and get on to the other things here?
Well, we're talking about committee reports.
Yeah, I know, but we're not talking about whether or not we're going to give the airport committee for having that. We didn't meet because Mayor and the city manager couldn't come up with a date.
Please, this is not a perfect question. I asked a point of information, sir. Well, it was already clear that they did not meet. Sorry.
I've been talking to that.
Very, well, I asked if anyone had any committee reports from council. Further, are there any members of the Disaster Planning Committee? Or anyone who attended that meeting perhaps in the audience? I don't believe I see any. But in the future, I think we should remember to have members that are here come forward and report on this agreement. But do you have anything further to add to the Finance Committee report?
No. No, other than, I have to say, as a member of the Finance Committee that has two citizen members, I salute the chairman, who's chairing this meeting tonight. We spent hours and hours dealing with the issues that prior city councils and prior city managers did not want to deal with. It's a thankless task. It takes a long time. We're informed by citizen members that manage budgets much bigger than the ones worth managing, and I think it's a step forward for the community.
Thank you. Are there any further committee reports? Seeing none, I'd like to move on to item seven, the approval of the minutes for the February 20th City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on February 20th, 2020.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mary Scaffen.
Yes.
Yes.
Agenda page five. Item 11A, new business. Part-time WWTP grade three operator. My recollection is when I raised the Paul Rose report and the possibility that the city of Dunsmere could work with the city of Mount Chasta, that Councilmember Keisler agreed to amend his motion so that, yes, the mandate is fine. We will hire a wastewater three operator until a permanent fix can be found. We also are going to have a meeting between the city of Dunsmere and the city of Mount Chasta at the R-WAC meeting, the Regional Water Action Group. Mayor McCasey, with her city planner hat on, said the city of Mount Chasta has a wastewater five operator, and they will have a wastewater three operator if the bottling plant goes through. And to me, it sets up the scenario that we could benefit the ratepayers, our water and sewer system customers, to go with the regional approach recommended by Paul Rose. And that's not the way the motion by Keisler reads. So I would like it to be amended to say it's a two-fold motion. One is we accept that the temporary patch is better than pace, but the other is the city of Dunsmere is going to explore with the city of Mount Chasta a cost-effective solution for most of our water testing needs. And I don't, it's up to you, Big Dave, when you recall that or not. I believe you accept it.
I'll amend my motion to approve the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Well, let's go over the specific amendment for our clerk here. Where exactly do you want it inserted?
Motion by Keisler to hire the part-time wastewater three operator to replace Pace until a permanent fix can be found, and, and the city manager and appropriate personnel will consult with the city of Mount Chasta on a regional approach for meeting our wastewater needs.
Do you have that? Thank you.
The newspaper published a correction on Wednesday. They reported this had already happened, and in fact, it hasn't happened.
Okay.
All right, so there's a motion to approve the minutes as amended, seconded by Councilman Keisler.
No, I made my motion to amend. I'll go ahead and amend my second. Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Umpiring, aye. Against, motion opposed. I think Kerry, you guys on approval push.
All right, we did not put a timeframe on it. All right, thank you.
Before we enter into consent agenda, public hearing, old business, new business, I'd like to briefly entertain some data adjustments. One, we're going to remove the review of committee appointments. I think it's not necessarily pressing in nature, and we need the full council here to probably discuss that.
Concur with that assessment, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anything else that big needs review or will not until we have the full council? Councilor Hesse.
Okay, two things. One, I'd like to make a motion to table revisited 2020 budget goals and objectives until we have a full council. And then, two, let's talk about C, discussion of possible action. Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce. I don't remember, Mr. Art, do you remember speaking a motion to put that on the agenda at the meeting?
Well, I'll help you.
Well, then help me.
I was in the office when you requested it go on the agenda, and then I seconded it.
I never requested you go on the agenda. We stopped the check, we stopped the check until we talked about it. However, going on an agenda, that, we talked about putting on something agenda here, not in an office. And for it to be on here, I don't know how the hell, one person can call and have something put on agenda, that ain't the way it works, you know?
Fairly certain.
That ain't the way it works.
I assert that you were the original voice, seconded by me.
Never put on, we made a motion to put something on agenda at the.
And I'd like to take it a step further. I was at the, I was at.
This is so out of line, Matthew.
I was so out of line. I was at the meeting, the agenda meeting, with Juliana and Todd. And at that meeting, we went through the whole thing, and it was not on there. And I show up at the next council meeting, it was on there, and I understand that you put it on there.
I certainly was in agreement with Councilman Keisler. Well, when we get to this item, when it comes on this agenda, I think before we discuss it, because my understanding currently is that currently it doesn't need to be on that, but I think we should have the opportunity, since it is here, for the chamber to be able to update us, which was the main intent, if I recall.
I want a staff report. On the table, there's a staff report.
If we could just pay, if we could just agree to pay the chamber, then I think that what the chamber is planning on doing is coming up with a report that will look at the overall picture of economic development. But they're not really, they couldn't, David is the only person who could make it from the chamber tonight, the other people couldn't. There was no sense of what you wanted to hear, there's no staff report. They just showed up and they're saying, on Wednesday, I showed up and I had the executive director, Len Michael, ask me, where's our chair?
If you'd like to discuss this item, I guess you wait until it comes up on the agenda. If you would like to discuss moving it or have a motion to table it?
I have a motion to table it, and we can release the check to them. I've signed the check, and I have no idea that out of the clear blue sky, that check would be held.
This is, this is kind of a really good point, Andrew. Why we pay $55,000? We, $45,000. Mount Chasta, $45,000. We're talking $10,000 here treating our chamber like a stepchild.
Well, I'd like to point out this, because you and I, the two people who said we need more information.
They were close to that. You got me at a weak moment, yeah, right, they're close. Now, since then, we know that they have restructured, yet you still don't want to give them money.
Who said I didn't want to give them money?
What's this about, bro? Is this a public spanking? Why are we doing this? Why are we pulling this up?
I could ask you the same question, you and I.
No, three of us.
You and I.
I never said it was going to come to here in this arena.
What did you think we're going to put it on hold until we get more information and talk about it? We went on to City Council, however.
Since then, what that, they gave a presentation? They came and explained to us that you'd restructure? You know, I get what you're.
I didn't put it on the agenda specifically tonight.
You have a lot of it.
All right, well, is there, there's a.
I'm making a motion to table this.
First, go with item D, you brought that up first, you have a motion to table item D.
I want to table B, C, and D. Let's talk about the resolution and let's go, because this is crazy.
All right, well.
We don't have full council.
Is there a motion to table all three items? Is there a second?
I don't want to do that unless I'm knowing that the check is going to the chamber, that's bottom line.
Then you don't get that, because this is.
Take it, let's go get that thing, let's go.
Do you want to amend your motion to just be D? I've already removed item D as chair. Is everyone in agreement with that?
I'm in agreement with that.
I'm in agreement with that.
All right, item D, I'm fine with leaving that off too, if we need that, or is there consensus? Behind, waiting for a full council on that?
I'm agreeing with that too.
I mean, I do apologize that I was ill last time, so we delayed it. The audit can't make it this time, we're delaying it. It's important, but I think it's equally important that everyone's here to discuss it. So there's.
That leaves us with C, and a check being held hostage.
A and C, yes.
Yeah, I'm glad you agree with that.
I don't see any check being held hostage on the agenda.
Well, that's weird.
But if you do need, well, we'll get to item C. So I'd like to move forward to the consent agenda. There's a check register for February 14th to February 28th. Loopers, are there any questions or clarifications?
Loopers.
All right, is there any comment on the check register? Seeing none?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Consent agenda? Seconded by Councilman Deutsch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move forward to the CBG application. So this is one of the most vital programs, the Community Development Block Grant Program. I think it's kind of a federal-state partnership, if that makes any right, in terms of administration, because the source being federal government initially. It provides funds for projects that are ready to go related to economic and housing projects. And this particular application, I think we'll turn off the city manager to explain his staff report.
So, well, actually, just to put it right, CBG is, you know, originally designed to combat redlining and for providing low-income housing, but it's morphed into some other programs like for infrastructure and for Section 108 loans, economic development block grant, and in this case, we've got a grant program that it's more applied and wherever you are in life, you know, if there's money left over, it will be awarded.
So yeah, so to piggyback off of that a little bit. So the main reason for this public hearing is to get public input. So please feel free to provide your input. Okay, so CBG funds, it's a granting program. Page 12 of the packet kind of gives some of the broad programs. So there are three. There's economic development, housing, and non-housing. Okay, kind of three broad. And this is, the city can go toward and try for up to $3.5 million. There is $60 million in this bank of funds somewhere. So the city can go for $3.5 million, and that is a non-competitive grant. Okay? So it's OTC, over-the-counter. So with those three broad categories that got mentioned, each one has a competitive and a non-competitive component. Okay? So we are now opening up for public comment and public input into where the citizens want and would love for the city to be able to apply, and what kind of programs within those ones that council citizens want. Little bit.
What are some of the programs?
Give an example, man. People don't know.
Great, yeah. So economic development for profit businesses. Housing is refurbish, refurbishment of your house, not actually buying a house, but refurbishing. And then, non-housing is, non-housing, infrastructure, that kind of thing, okay? Now, there's a little distinction, there's programs and projects. Now, each of these kind of, those two words, they need to be ready to go, so each thing. So projects are, for instance, what we're kind of hoping for as staff is sewer mains. So that is a project, and the projects to be ready have to have all their engineering and environmental and all that kind of stuff done, so they're shovel-ready, ready to go. Programs, economic development, this housing, those are more programs. Those have to be established, ready to go. The state says, here's the money, then you're, it's basically a pass-through of funds, and it's ready to be passed out. So the program has to be fully fleshed out. If it's a housing, or if it's economic, underwriters in line, all that, it's ready to go. Looking down here, what else do I want to say? Well, let me just read off the purpose of public participation. So that's the whole point of this, and then we'll turn it over to the public. So to inform the public of the intent to apply, so the city is intending to apply potentially, and that's where the resolution will come in after. Inform the public of the intent to spend program income. That program income is the money that comes back into. That program income is the money that comes back into, the city coffers in the fund from payments that come back in.
Hold the check.
All right. Wondering if there was some more questions? All right. Then, to allow the public the opportunity to provide input into what activities they deem priorities, look, okay? And then four, to provide the public an assessment of the two CBG, of the CBG program accomplishments. So that's essentially at the end, we need to have two public hearings for the CBG program. We're having one right now currently. Then there'll be one at the end of the program saying what a great program it was, and that it was used for this, and so forth. So, I think that means...
Before we pass that along? So, in taking a look at this program, the reason that, and again, this is a proposal, and we're bringing this up to help us see if people want to use this money for something else, if we got it. The idea here is, as we all know, our sewers are in horrible shape, we have branches poking through some of our sewer lines, we've got crushed laterals all over the sewer. And the idea, given our pretty limited budget annually, that we're ever going to come up with enough funds to be able to replace a big chunk of our sewer system at one time is slim to none. And so when we get these kind of opportunities, we've got to, in our opinion, take that chance and grab as much money as we can and pick off big, you know, really large capital projects. So that's why we have the proposal to replace, you know, a chunk of our sewer system. So with that, we can open up to public comments.
Well, first, actually, let's keep it open to your councilman, clarification questions? Are there any questions, first?
I can see we can get up to three point five million dollars, vote for it.
No questions, no questions about how the program works, Councilor? All right. With that then, I'd like to open the public hearing. We do have this available, and notice, right, the actual public card, available to people? Does anyone need a copy of it? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. I'll open the public hearing. Citizens can come forward.
Please come to the podium, sir.
I give your name and address and public record. You have three minutes, make your comment.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Lance Anderson, I live on Shasta Avenue, five nine three seven. The immediate concern I have about this is, if you say, we don't have enough money to do all of it, but some of it, who is going to figure out what the sum of it is that we're going to do? And how is that going to work? And what's going to happen if we figure it out wrongly?
So, it's not that important. But afterwards, I'll be an opportunity to speak with the city manager. Do you have any further comments on any public hearings?
No.
Well, thank you. He can answer it, but he can't answer it while you're standing out there.
Okay.
Any further public comments on this public hearing?
David Kalno, forty-seven, forty Simpson. Just two comments. One, I think the sewer project improvement needs, anything we can do there, fine. Other is the rehabilitation of housing for low-income people in town, I think is a big need, a lot of housing is sustained here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any further public comments on this public hearing? City manager, if you'd like to respond to this question.
So, our city engineer record is a private engineering firm pays down in Reading, and they're doing all of our water, wastewater work. We have, we have folks here, but Pace has put together a capital improvement project or program for our sewers, and has laid out the things that we need to desperately replace first, and then phases to get to the point of replacing the entire system. So it's been studied thoroughly, and it's very clear the things that we need to pick off first.
Another just comment to the other, a public comment that, and I agree that available loans for low-income residents to fix up their houses is a viable program. And we used to have, some years ago in Dunsmere, and I'd love to see it come back as well. You know, a lot of people could never afford a ten thousand dollar repair on their house, but they could afford what that payment would look like, spread out over ten years. So I think, thank you for bringing that back at that point. All right, is there any further public comment before we move forward?
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing on the community development block grant application public hearing. We have no old business.
Can I make a motion?
Certainly.
A motion to approve resolution forty, forty.
We haven't gotten some time for that yet, because this is just public hearing.
You haven't got to that yet.
We'll go with other comments.
Okay.
Before we get to that, we'll move on to new business, item A, resolution two thousand twenty, resolution zero three?
Four.
Zero four. Resolution zero four, approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and the amendments of the state CBG program. Open that up to council discussion.
Now?
Do you want, I do, so I just to feedback of what Todd was saying, that Pace does have a lot of the engineering, all the environmental's all done for these projects, and so it's essential that we can just submit this and click go and be ready. Just FYI, the applications were opened February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, and so it'd be great to try and get it submitted ASAP.
So is your point there, Senator, when you go for something like sewer, because of our engineering company is ready to go, we're ready to hit, you know, ready to shovel, whereas something like the housing program, we don't have that program fully sorted out yet, so it's more difficult to substantiate that we're ready for that.
That's exactly right.
All right, further questions?
Oh, now I move to the...
Yep, this is an item, we already have a public comment.
Further clarification, you ready? Councilman, no questions. All right. Well, this is clarification questions.
No clarification question.
All right. I'll open up resolution two thousand twenty, zero four, for public comment. Anyone else to come forward on this set and make public comments on this resolution? We're welcome to do so now. All right, seeing none, let's move forward to council discussion.
So there's been a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'm going to make one now, if you'll allow. All right. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero four, a resolution approving applications for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendment there, there to, what's that say, there, there, to, from the twenty nineteen twenty funding year of the state CBG program by title only. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second. All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
My thought is, it's very unlikely the state will fund us to fix our sewers in this program. My second thought is, we suffer for not having a strategic vision and a plan. So, for instance, the community pool, I think would be more attractive than fixing our sewer system. I think housing, obviously, we have a professional city planner, we got a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to deal with the new housing element for the city. So if the notion is shovel-ready is the mantra of the day, go ahead, I will vote for this, but I think it will be unsuccessful.
Perhaps we can clarify that. We're still open to follow, to apply for this program with other needs in the future, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, I was thinking that the resolution, you can come back with other projects in the future.
This isn't, this isn't the first rodeo, this, they're going to be back around looking for, you know, they're going to have NOPA's, Notice of Funding Availability, again, and Councilman Art is right, our planner with SB two funds is working on, well, working on the housing element and getting to the point where, you know, we have housing stock that we can work on, and that's something that we should chase next time the grant comes around. The idea of the pool, that, that doesn't qualify under community development, block grant funds, it's purely infrastructure, you know, water, sewer, electric.
Stuff that supports.
Yeah.
In that way. I'd like to remind everyone that through this program, the city currently has a grant awarded for economic development. So for profit businesses can obtain, they're financing or financing through conventional means, they can apply to the city. The program's evaluated by how many jobs you're projected to create, but there's a total of close to a hundred thousand dollars available for low-interest rate loans for businesses in the city of Dunsmere. It's something that's a great resource to anyone looking to open a business or expand in the city, and we look forward to giving you more information on that. And this program has just a lot of pieces to it, you apply, and it doesn't go away, always get awarded it, but this one was awarded three years ago, I believe, for economic, or two, two years ago?
Two.
Two. So maybe next time around, we can get our program, the housing side of it, together, and we could apply to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I believe that one of our current residents, Mr. Dave Edmondson, he applied for this with his sauerkraut business. He became so successful that he just won an award, like worldwide award for his sauerkraut. So I give him props for one, taking advantage of this program, two, being successful in his business, and three, footed us, girl, and that. Reply, Dave Edmondson.
Thank you, Dave. And the newest borrower is actually the dough hook. They received a loan, and that's been a vital part of them getting out the money.
I know, I appreciate that new, and you're, that's cool.
Yeah, there's a great many people that have benefited on both sides of the counter when it comes to these loans. See a lot of our favorite establishments have benefited from them. If you need more information, I come in and talk with the city, it's a hall. Are we ready to entertain the motion?
The motion has been motioned, it's been seconded, I think you should do a roll call or whatever.
That's not funny, it's a block or something, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries for zero.
Okay.
All right. Now, I'd like to open item C. First, with my understanding of what this vague item means and why it's here, where we're at, we've got discussion and possible action, Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce. It's my understanding that many weeks ago, when we were set to release the last part of the community promotions fundings to the chamber, it came to mind, and Councilman Geisler's contention that the chamber hadn't been open a lot lately, it didn't have an executive director yet, and that we hadn't heard recently about what the upcoming year was going to look like in terms of events in the chamber at all. Both of us, dogged in time, that before we, before we released more money, it's about time to be just heard from you guys again. Since then, that was, I think, six weeks ago or so, since then, I have learned a great deal about what's been going on at the chamber, we hired an interim executive director, and put out an events calendar, et cetera. So, given the context of why it was initially put on the agenda, which is to give clarification to discuss where we're at with the chamber, I'd like to emphasize that the real reason it's on the agenda is the chamber, or the function of the chamber, is vastly important to this town. You know, when people come and stay in our hotel rooms, and we collect ten percent tax that goes straight to the city, ten percent, so when we have events, people want to come and visit Dunsmere, and it's easy for them to make it to the businesses, they spend money here, they value our community, and we benefit because we're able to better maintain it through that revenue. You know, it's a causal relationship. A large portion of the money we spend directly on economic development goes through the chamber, and that, myself at least, I just wanted to see where we're at, if the visitor center was closed, I was worried maybe we were getting behind on things. I believe that's what this Councilman Geisler allowed the opportunity to share in moments. I believe that was his intention as well, that we need to check up on the chamber and make sure we're going into action. And playing the vital role, you guys, you guys have a vital role within this community, and we were just a little concerned in that moment, because we hadn't heard for a while. So, I'd like to invite all the directors here from the chamber. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When I talked with the mayor about this, Juliana, she agreed that she would let me introduce this item before Mr. Kalno gets on, and I've worked with the chamber and meeting to do that, so. Certainly, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, council. I just wanted to take this opportunity, we had a real energized meeting at the chamber, I'm the liaison, so I sit in the back and watch all that's going on, and I'll tell you the frustration was, is that the way this came down was that nobody made an effort to call anybody. Held on to the check, I remember Wednesday, I went to the mixer, and I had Luanne Weigle, who's the acting executive director right now, come up to me and say, what's going on with the check? And I said, hey, I'll tell you what, we went through the freeze, you're no longer...
The item is about the chamber and not the check. So we can just talk about the chamber and introduce the chamber. We're trying to hear from the chamber.
I know.
Where they're at.
And I am the liaison from the council for the chamber, and the mayor has asked me to come up and put this in context.
Thank you. He's trying to emphasize the importance of the checks, sir.
Yeah, I mean, let me just put it to the, let me put it this way. Wyrica spends fifty-five thousand dollars on the chamber. Mount Shasta spends forty-four thousand dollars on the chamber. What I'm trying to get across is that the attitude towards the chamber up until this point is that they should come through the doorway that is asking for money every year for community development. I believe that right now, we're spending one-fourth of the money that Mount Shasta spends on luring people into the city. And it doesn't get raised that way, because right now, all we've been looking at is how can we cut money? And the idea that the one central part of our organization that is aimed at bringing people in, that brings in both TUT and TOT, should be asked to come and beg along with everybody else, the chamber is going to be putting together a report that it wants to bring together, that establishes an economic development line item in the budget, that is aimed at coming up with a comprehensive view of how we can take money and spend it and compete with Mount Shasta. Because right now, the way it's set up, we as a council are saying that we want to spend one-fourth of the amount of money that our most important competitor in the tourism business just up the street is spending. And if we keep going down that way, it doesn't make any sense, because if we rely on the chamber to come up with their own money, if they have a bad year, if there's another fire or another smoke season, that's going to impact our TUT and our TOT. You're looking at the budget from the standpoint of trying to cut, 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 but economic development is an area where you should be saying, how much can we spend more? And that's what I wanted to make sure we realize as a council, that right now, we can bring up David, and he'll tell you all the exciting things that are going on, but I believe that we have a flaw in our system, and we don't recognize that we need to bring tourists in in order to increase our TUT and TOT. And once we do that, I don't think we're going to be worrying about ten thousand dollars, we should be worrying about how can we compete with our neighbors. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Councilor. David Kalno, member of the board of the Chamber of Commerce of Dunsmere, been on the board for a long time, more years than I care to, I bet. Want to thank all the council members here and city staff for their support of the chamber. I am excited about Dunsmere right now. If you look back ten years, Downton was empty of both business and people, and we've slowly climbed out of that hill, more and more storefronts are being operated, more and more businesses are opening, and the key is being successful. When the brewery first opened, I think the life expectancy of a new business in Dunsmere was about two months. And, you know, we did go through, the chamber did go through a bump in the road, unfortunately, it happened after, you know, because of the financial difficulty of the... it happened after, you know, because of the financial difficulty of the fire and the Brew Fest getting canceled, our main supply of funding for the year. Couldn't afford being a responsible organization, couldn't afford to pay the executive director for a while, so we did have to go part of this winter without an ED, saving their money, scraping on expenses, and now back to the point where the chamber can afford to hire a part-time administrative person. So we do have that position open right now. Applications are available on, through the chamber, check out our website. Couple other things coming up very soon is with the Rotary Club of Dunsmere, the chamber, what, about four years ago, picked up from the outside of Mount Shasta, the Dunsmere Easter Day account for the kids, so that's Saturday, the 10th of April, if my memory serves me right, the day before Easter. So, we welcome all the community to be involved in that, to come and volunteer, or pass the word, or sometime soon, somebody's going to be coming around hitting you up for $10 donations for that. As Bruce said, the mixer was success, we had close to 70 people attend the mixer at the Mossby Hotel. We've got, and recently, we've added three new members to our board, Mark Rowley from the Mossby Hotel, Kit Marshall from Edna Brewing Company and the bottling plant, and Sandra Hood. Sandra Hood, no, I'm blank for a second, also is on the board. So, mentioned the mixer, next mixer scheduled at the bottling plant for, be Wednesday, April the 20th, should be exciting, I'm looking forward to getting a tour of the bottling plant and find out what their long-range plans are. In addition, we're just kicking off the planning for this year's Brew Fest, which will be the first Saturday in August, August 1st this year. That meeting is this week, if anybody would like to participate in the planning of that or volunteer that day, you're welcome. In other words, things are, you know, dynamic, we're moving forward, I'm excited, I'm hoping we can find a good candidate that's a good fit for the chamber and for the town. If you have any questions?
Yes, I have one question, if anyone's trying to get an event started in town, is there room currently within the chamber to potentially partner with you for an event this year, or is somebody that would have to be out at long ranges next year?
Depends, depends on the event and what it was, and capacity and the tool bag that that person brings along. Yeah, you could still do a major concert for this fall, if you wanted to do something like that, it's still early enough.
So, who does want to get in contact with, who is interested?
At the present time, I'm talking, first person I'd talk to would be Luanne, who's an interim ED, our outstanding chamber board member, myself.
And then the other thing I'd like to ask, I know a lot of people over the years have volunteered at the visitor center, and it's almost exclusively volunteer-based, is there a place for them to go to, you just go in there, you can talk to Luanne about maybe taking on a shift? Do you have to commit to weekly, or if you only have once a month, could one volunteer on that timeframe?
Okay, that's another thing that we're going to be doing, that's one of the girls of Cindy, the new, the new current president, she just took that role, is to increase the volunteer pool. So, for a dependable person, I would say it's, it's a possibility if they just wanted to do once a month.
Well, then I'd like to just encourage all of our public to get involved, visitor center is busier than you'd expect in this digital age, people do really, really enjoy.
It is amazing how many, every time I'm in there, there's visitors coming in to check us out, so that, and that's exciting.
What volume do you plan to talk?
Pardon?
Volume and quid, what volume do you do?
Um, I think we can address that, but it's just directed to our council currently.
Dave? Dave, part of all, I'd like to thank you for, for, I know you've been involved with that chamber for quite some time, and as a rottarian and a chamber fore, I see you going to work for this community, I'm honored to be in your service, sir. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, everybody here.
Any questions, Councilman Art? Hello, David, Councilman Art? I, a couple more, one would just be, I know you guys had a financial hardship with that summer that we all shared with you, but you guys were in particularly hard having council major events when you saw the paper. Are you looking to be in a good position with your guys' reserves currently, or is this still kind of chipping on there, slowly building, or what would you guys, do you have any comments on your financial situation, whether you're on the mend or still kind of?
We're actually making progress, moving, moving forward, we do have a cash reserve, or we could run the chamber for a few months if we had to, with what we have in the bank. But, we're coming into the time of the year where we do need to be spending money, we do need to be, like you say, putting on events, helping with railroad days, doing advertising, doing marketing, so, yes.
Yeah, and then, is there any way we got more volunteers involved, we can help drive down the costs for you guys, or is, is there perhaps a medium we could hold potentially?
You know, most of the costs are things like the porta-potties, the bus, you know, the buses, the advertising, the things like that, they're all the laborers, volunteers, and we do get some in-kind donations, but if someone wants to help raise money in sponsorships, that.
Okay, do you think it's in the mixer and they'll learn more, is that something open to the public, or just chamber members?
Member, the chamber, the mixers are open to the community that's interested in the economic, the economics of Dunsmere, so there's, there's members, sometimes new business people, sometimes we have people come in to just network, they want to sell credit card processing, they're interns.
I'll give you a second, Councilman Art, please, sir.
Will there be a railroad day celebration in 2020, and what will the chamber's involvement be? Do we have a date yet?
Ye, there, there is a railroad days happening this year, I've heard the date, but I don't have it in my, in my mind. You know, the chamber office is sort of railroad, is the administrative office for railroad days, they operate it in insurance, to mend the support.
There will be soapbox.
Will be soapbox, yeah. So it's a, there is, you know, the railroad days committee is, is proud of their, of their administrative independence of running railroad days, and the chamber is their, their support system.
And the reason for the question is, the finance committee, as you know, has spent a huge amount of time on what is now the community grant program, is competitive, and this year, you don't have to be a nonprofit, you could be anybody to come and ask the city for community grant funds, but for bedrock events like railroad days, will the chamber be the fiscal sponsor, will the chamber simply be a cheerleader? I think as we try to allocate funds to get things done, this is what's at issue.
It varies with the organization and their administrative structure, the, like, the railroad days has their own bank account, they're physically responsible for the money that they have. Some donations have come to the chamber earmarked for railroad days, and those get passed on to the railroad days committee. It was interesting at the, you brought up the, all of the organizations applying, at the finance committee hearing for funding on that, the vast majority of organizations that were asking for money were talking about how vital the chamber was for the functioning of their organizations, and some even said they couldn't exist without it, one example being the farmer's market, that's a, runs under the, the chamber administrative and is oversight, and we handle, we do handle their, all of their finances. Candles in the Canyon, same kind of thing, they're moving in the direction of becoming financially independent, but in the past, the chamber has been their financial oversight, handle the money and pays the bills, they may go that way, you know, so, varies. We're, you know, chamber's involved, is involved, involved with that.
Would you, David, kind of clarify the concept of the office? I know, I hear the theory, the chamber was, nobody was in the chamber, and really, there are two different aspects there, you've got the chamber office, and maybe who has in there, whatever, but the other part is the visitor center, so if nobody's in the visitor center, that doesn't mean that the chamber is not operating, would you kind of comment on that?
Um, yeah, the chamber, well, the, you know, the visitor center is, is physically based at across the street, that's where it is, but the chamber goes beyond the physical space, it, it, it is identity. The visitor center is pretty much entirely run by volunteers, ED, their paid staff has done some. I do know there was a time, based on volunteers, things happen with volunteers, they can't always be there, and they're, I don't want to get into the specifics of it, but we did have one of our very, one of volunteers we counted on a lot, was unable to work for a couple, for a while, to help out, so we had, it took some time to get a replacement for that volunteer, but we're moving forward, and we could use more, even.
But people are more interested, when is your next board meeting?
We meet the first Tuesday of the month at 5:30, across the street in the chamber office.
And that is open to the public, or is it?
We, the public, there is a public comment period, but for the bulk of the board meeting, we reserve the right to have a private meeting, it's not a, you know, it's not subject to Brown Act, but we often have, people stay for most of the meetings, sometimes they stay for a little and leave, but anybody can come and talk in the public comment and hear that part.
Are there any further clarifying questions?
I'd just like to give a shout out to Mike Wright and Barbara Valens, and those are two of the volunteers that I know are diehard volunteers.
Yeah, I have one here that worked for years and years and years, Barbara.
Barbara, are you?
Yeah.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
For your, for your volunteerism and your dedication to our town, I love you.
Yeah, and organizations cannot succeed in Dunsmere without committed volunteers, they do with integral parts, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion that we release the check to the Chamber of Commerce?
I don't think there was a hold from council, so I think we should move forward, I don't think, is there any discussion? I'd like to hear a call from a couple of us before we get to that one, but I don't believe the motion's required, we can't make one.
Just show them the money.
Would you like to say here?
Show them the money.
We still need to have a public comment, so.
Yeah.
So, we don't have any questions, is there any public comments on the chamber representative? Seeing none, move forward to discussion.
The Jim, I'd like to say it first.
Okay, I, I say that due to everything that's been brought into light, the situation at hand isn't what it is, it wasn't what it was, I feel that they, they need the money, so I think that we should release the funds that they have not got, that we promised them, now that we know what's going on, we should release the funds, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Art.
I'll second that.
Yeah? Councilman Art, would you like to comment on it?
Well, the comment is, so everybody's clear, the application for community grant funds for the new fiscal year, 2021 closes on April the 1st, we fully expect the chamber to be an applicant for funds, and they're going to go through this fairly rigorous process, the application's more rigorous, the questions that they'll be expected to answer in finance committee, as we make the recommendation to the full council, will be more rigorous, this is the discussion we wanted to have in our community, but I think fair is fair, they ran through the gauntlet for the last fiscal year, and the council, my recollection, subject correction, is they asked for $15,000, we gave them $10,000, and I don't see any reason to embargo that, as we close out the current fiscal year and move to the next process.
Yeah, um, thank you, Councilman Art. I would like to make it very clear that this discussion was not primarily about embargoning the funds, it was about the extreme concern in that moment of uncertainty about how functional the chamber was at that exact point. I feel that things are on the right path, I take responsibility very seriously when between $30,000 and $35,000 of the city's financial capabilities is spent on organization, and I was concerned with the closure, as was rightfully Councilman Kaiser, I certainly do not mean to hold the money at this point in time, I just wanted this conversation to take place, and thank you so much for the tremendous hours spent making that organization what it is, we want the city to support its chamber, and part of that means not just funds, but caring enough to be concerned if something like the visitor center seems to be sporadically closed. And I know rough times are rough times, we need to communicate both ways, but I really appreciate you coming here tonight and filling us in on questions that's coming here.
The one thing that really got everybody was the idea that nobody called anybody and said, your check is being held, and in fact, every time Luanne went to the office, nobody could tell her why she wasn't getting a check.
That, that is concerning, I apologize.
The concerning part is, if you had a concern about a check, you could have called somebody, and you could have found out that day what it was, instead, we went through a dance that ended up them in confusion and wondering whether they could get the money, and that wasn't necessary. I'm just trying to say that as a council, we should be able to talk to each other and talk to the people out there without going through some backdoor thing to hold on to a check.
To be clear, there's never a backdoor thing, I think the reason why it comes across, well, the reason why it clearly has raised emotions among the vested parties here, is that it dragged on. You know, this was brought up in mid-January, and it sounds like it was in March that the foundation began to agenda because of multiple delays.
I signed the check two weeks ago, I signed the check and nobody else signed that check. So I'm saying, two weeks ago, if you were walking around the office saying, I don't know if the chamber is open, I don't know if I should sign this check, the next time, please call somebody, instead of saying, let's hold off on the check and not tell anybody. Nobody knew why they weren't getting the money, sir.
Quoite.
We could argue this, I know, I just wanted to get it clear that in the future, I hope we're all about this different, quoite.
All right, I also hope in the future, the organizations that are receiving substantial support from the city, if things aren't going according to schedule, that they reach out to our city executive and make sure he is aware of your position on a weekly basis, would be my advice, on the other side of it, because if you turn to people who are paid by us to keep track of everything, and they don't have the answers, and they're there all week to receive these answers, we're also a volunteer organization, I apologize if we created any sort of frustration with this event, but I look forward to a robust season for the chamber, and we certainly have my continued support. I believe we need a motion, if you'd like a motion to release the funds.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to second it.
It's morning, let's do a roll call, make it efficient.
Roll call, Councilman Art?
Yes, sir. To say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilman Joy?
Aye.
Councilman Kaiser?
Absolutely, aye.
All right. My name is aye.
That's your answer.
I've seen no further items on the agenda, let's entertain the future agenda, I've reminded everyone that to get an add-on on the future agenda, you need a, you know, a second from a fellow city council.
May I ask, was there an agenda review meeting before this agenda?
Yeah, that was Bruce and Juliana this time.
No, not for this time, this time was a carryover from last time.
Oh.
When I met with Juliana, that was back for the prior one, and then Matthew couldn't make it that one, couldn't make it to the meeting, but that was for that year. I don't know if there was.
Well, that's not the point, the point is, we all voted for the program. The point is, we all voted for the protocols that oversee how we do business. So this will be the third meeting where I've raised the governments of the historic district and the recreation of an entity to oversee the historic district, which the city manager said we need to do. I got a second from council member Keisler, not once but twice. And it's like none of this ever happens.
Well, I, I think that then, just on that, when I saw review of committee appointments, I don't remember that coming up as specifically in council, but if we could expand that to be of committees generally, you know, if we could clean up our roster of committees.
I think really likely to be accepted by the department was our code enforcement officer hadn't completed that course yet. And once he does, then we have, we have grounds.
No, I think there's, there's a different item he's talking about here. So I understand that the item is, is that there should be an organization in charge making sure that the historic district is run. My, the reason, Peter, that I think that right now that doesn't belong on the agenda is this. They're working it right now. They're exploring it right now. I don't believe they're ready for a staff report. We don't want to have something on the agenda till they've had a chance to figure out what's going on. Now, we can break it before the agenda and they'll say, well, we haven't figured it out yet. But that doesn't make sense. But I know they're working on it and I know they're doing it.
I, I don't know that they're working on it. I don't know when it will come on.
Ask them.
This is the point of the agenda review committee and the protocols. So I am very frustrated that I have followed the protocols. This is agenda-worthy. If the deliverable is a report from staff. But what's happening now is we have a planning commission. And the default position is that two members of the planning commission are supposed to be protectors of the historic district. And that simply does not happen. So we have a brand-new ordinance about vacant and underused buildings. We have a code enforcement officer. We have approaches that have worked to save our historic district. And I can't get it on the agenda. And I'm a little frustrated.
All right, we, we, we have it on the agenda list.
I have a second two times.
Three, three times, I believe. Any other agenda items?
I only have one for the Building Dunsmere's Future Brief to council on the next one.
I second that.
Thank you.
Run as a presentation?
Yeah, presentation, yeah, exactly.
Congressman.
I, I will say again, the issue of communication having been raised, the issue of the city's contract with Covenant and greenwashing, again, is one of those where we now have March, April, May, June. And we have no really informed negotiation between the disaster advisory committee, newly-elected Ed Alonzoala, who would like to do a regional green waste program. We just can't get that on the agenda either.
Well, it's actually, green waste not specifically perhaps, but that review of budget goals and objectives clearly talks about renegotiating the contract with Covenant. And I assume that we kept that item on here, we would have received an update from the city manager on where we're at there.
But, but really, there's, for the effort to be power safe, for the effort to deal with recycling and the new state mandates will be what's left.
Is there anything more directly relating to future agenda items?
Nope.
I'll see no more, I'll entertain.
I, I would like to know if we are working towards another cleanup now, you know, before we go into fire season? That's just, some would like to see. The issue, we don't have a green waste program, but, you know, yet. I think, I think the town should have another, you know, free cleanup day before fire season. That's my opinion, I'd like to see that happen.
I believe you're.
Wait, wait, can I get a second on my fire day?
I think that's on the.
Well, just so we can see a second.
I'll send the second.
There you go. Thank you, gentlemen. Juliana, Mr. Mishack, come home soon.
Well, I hope whoever's on the next agenda review committee who aren't paying attention to the protocols will. Former Mayor Spurlock and former Mayor Bryce Craig did a lot of work toward the notion, we need to function as a city, we need to set priorities. And it's sort of like the protocols we all agreed to are exhausted.
Peter, I'll let you just say this. When you talk about priorities, it comes down to one thing. How many hours are you going to prioritize him? And seriously, something on the agenda, you have to know if it's going to be ready.
We're not discussing the process for having one on the agenda right now. Future items, two on the agenda.
I was adding one thing, oh, she adjourned.
I already did.
Is there a second?
A second, sir.
All right, all of them, they're.
Aye, oh, aye.